A housekeeping matter, since there is someone here to address item 6.5. Let me note for the record that the Board is going to pull item 6.5 off of tonight's calendar and not address it. We will most likely take it up again next month, but the Board is not prepared to address 6.5 this evening, though you are welcome to speak to the item. As usual, we will begin with a report of actions taken in closed session from our clerk.
Thank you. On a six to zero vote, with Trustee Williams absent, the Board approved a two-month unplayed leave with benefits to a classified employee. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we would invite you all to stand for an invocation, which I have the honor of delivering tonight, and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Trustee Williams. Dear Heavenly Father, we come together today in fellowship and ask your blessings on our efforts here. Grant those of us today in elective office or positions of authority and responsibility the wisdom to know your will and the courage always to do that will. And grant to all of us the grace and comfort in our lives that comes from knowing you. Father, allow us also to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity you've given us to meet this evening as free men and women in a land dedicated to liberty. We ask for your strength and faithfully maintaining that dedication to liberty shown by our forefathers. May we be steadfast in passing it on to our children, because it comes not from man-made government, but from you, our Creator. Inscribed on the Liberty Bell that rang out in Philadelphia upon the founding of this nation are your wise instructions from Leviticus. Proclaim liberty throughout all the land unto all the inhabitants thereof. May we always do so. Finally, Heavenly Father, watch over and guide the men and women of our armed forces around the world who toil under the flag of the United States. May they prevail in their efforts to bring peace and freedom to a troubled world. And may we prevail in ours, not because we are the strongest or the loudest, but because we are always seeking after you. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, with its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn now to public comments, and the first person to speak will be Jason Radwan. If you would, please, sir.
My name is Jason Radwan. I'm here for item 6.5, which I found I got pulled tonight. I actually have a small write-up here that I would like to pass out. It's a one-to-two-page write-up. I don't know if I can give it to somebody that you guys can read and take away. Thank you. Just to be clear to everyone, and my understanding is, I know there's a lot of uncertainties about this. There's not going to be any commercial use on this. There's not going to be any parking. There's not going to be any buildings on this. This is strictly, right now, our office is in disarray, and we have a lot of photos. This problem gets worse and worse over the years. Back in 2004, 2005 is when, I mean, it really hit us. That year, we had 38 inches of rainfall, and the fire department had to come two times to our office. Our office building was built during the times of the county when there's no setbacks. So we're right on the property line. You guys may have a report that says it's not the hillside's fault, but being that we're right on there and the grade of the building, it's very obvious that it's coming underneath our slab, and something has to be done about this. I mean, we've been pretty patient with everybody for a couple of years now, and it's been idle because the last couple of years, it's been pretty dry season. This year, January and February is when it struck again, and right now, we have not been able to repair our office. I mean, I invite all of you guys to please come down and see it. Read the write-up that I wrote. You can see the benefits. We're going to place tight restrictions on this easement where it can be given back if it's misused in any way, shape, or form. All we want is to make our office right. We can't repair it permanently because of the fear for this to happen again. So I don't know if you guys want the photos. If you have seen the photos of our office, I can leave this photo board, too, just to take a quick look. I mean, I urge you guys to consider this, and then maybe next month at the Board meeting, we can talk a little bit further if you need to.
Thank you. Why don't you leave the photos, if you don't mind, with administration? And we will be in touch with you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Up next is Tony Huntsley, to be followed by Bob Cosgrove.
Okay. Well, this is quite brief. I'd like to report to you on two items and basically to thank the Board. First is the Fourth International Small Teapot Show and Competition, which took place March 11 through March 20, excuse me, February 11 through March 11 of this year. This was truly an international show with 300 entries from 10 different countries. There were over 300 guests at the opening reception. I believe I saw Trustee Lang there. There were over 100 pieces of dim sum and 40 gallons of tea consumed in one hour at that reception. 100 teapots were in the actual show. They represent seven countries, including Canada, Great Britain, Taiwan, China, and Australia. We have more than 1,500 visitors to the show over the course of the one month that it was open. 32 teapots were sold. Remarkable number, almost one-third of the entire stock of a show, was sold for a total of $11,000. 10 teapots were sold to the very prestigious Cam Teapot Foundation. Kevin Chamberlain, a graduate student at Iowa State University, won the grand prize. He will visit China this summer. Interestingly enough, his mother and his grandmother came from Minnesota for the opening. Other people at the opening included 15 artists from as far away as Anchorage, Alaska, and Salt Lake City. International weblogs now cite this as the number-one teapot show in the world. Again, thank you, Trustee Lang. I happened to see you there, and thank you, Bill Jay. Trustee Jay's wife bought one of those 32 teapots. So thank you to the Board for your support on that. The second item is our international Chinese guest artist. In February of 2009, the Associated Student Government of Saddleback College forwarded to the Board their budget, which included funds for a guest artist from China. This was the third time that this has taken place, and again, it was very well-received. Mr. Shang Faqian from Yixing, China, was at Saddleback College from the 24th of February to the 23rd of March. He completed 25 in-class demonstrations here at Saddleback College and interacted with over 500 students during his tenure. In addition, he did demonstrations at Socha University, Orange Coast College, Mount San Antonio College, Santa Ana College, and Chapman University. All of these were also well-received. Again, thank you to the Board and thank you to Associated Student Government for the funding for this project. Finally, a quick note. Tomorrow morning at 10:30 a.m. in Science Math 313, also graciously funded by Associated Student Government at Saddleback College, noted author and publisher of Skeptic Magazine, Michael Shermer, will speak on why Darwin matters. Thank you again.
Thank you. Professor Cosgrove, to be followed by Catherine Doe.
Hard act to follow. I have three items, very quickly. One, at our next Senate meeting, which will be a week from this coming Wednesday, we'll take up two primary issues that have been kind of fermenting. One is fairly new, is the Wellness Center that has been proposed to be built on the Saddleback campus. The other is our longstanding issue with ATEP and the concerns that faculty and staff have had and the wish for success that's there. Second item is recognition of our President. The executive officers asked me to indicate their pleasure with the work that he has been doing, particularly in the area that has not been well-advanced in the past, and that is marketing. He's done an exceptional job in marketing and outreach, and that's something that usually academic Presidents don't get too much involved in, but it's been a delight. He's also been really a very strong advocate of the Veterans Memorial. The last point is our accreditation issue. Several people stayed behind during spring break, faculty members in particular, Diane Pestalazzi and Tony Tang and Claire Cesario-Silver, who's writing the introduction to our accreditation report, and then Carmen Dominguez. And also recognize Rajan Verdian, who is co-chair with me for the Steering Committee, who's been doing a really stellar job and being very persistent in pushing everybody along with me. And then finally, Carol Hilton, who's really doing three jobs, and on top of that, the accreditation one. So a round of applause, I hope, for everybody who's done such a wonderful job, and I hope the results are satisfactory to WASC and that we will have a clean bill of health for five years.
Thank you, sir. And Catherine Doe.
Well, I'm a perpetual student here since 1984, and I'm a great school booster. And I couldn't be more enthusiastic about the progress that I've seen over the last several years in terms of getting this building built, in terms of more certificate programs in really exciting areas. And I'd like to ask a question or two about some of the agenda items, starting with 6.1, because I've been trying to get a certificate in travel as well as real estate and have really not made any progress with that. And part of it is just simply funding and being able to access funding. And there are some funds under the stimulus program currently available. In our community development brochure I picked up at the senior center in Laguna Beach, I noticed that there were considerable funds. So I don't know if you're aware of this resource or how it's being utilized, but I would say let's look into that. And on item 6.4, I don't know what the revisions might be, but for instance, in the real estate certificate program, most of the real estate here is so expensive that conventional financing really doesn't apply, and many people are really shut out of the housing market, especially the affordable market. And one additional course I think that would be helpful in that certificate program would be real estate as a security, which I have sold real estate as a security. And anything over four investors in a property, I believe, would qualify as a security. Also, on item 6.7, I'm not sure. What is the CCCT Board of Directors' election? And on one of the item 7.1, it says 2011. What's the evaluation process, and why is it 2011? Isn't this 2010? And thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. We are to the oral report section of tonight's festivities, and as always, we will start with Trustee Jay.
Yes, thank you, President Wagner. Yes, is Tony still here? I wanted to thank him for mentioning that my wife bought a teapot. She's done that for several years, and he does a great show. And my wife will really be glad to hear that it's the worldwide top as far as teapot trade shows go. So I'll mention to her that she was part of it. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate the Saddleback basketball team for its second state championship. I know there'd be a formal observation of that event at the next Board meeting, but the thing is, this is an amazing feat, because any community college can field a great basketball team. It's tougher with baseball or with football because of larger squads involved, but any small community college can get two or three great ball flayers out of a five-man team and win the state championship out of 112 colleges, and Saddlebacks won two of them. So I want to congratulate our coaches and all of the players, and a formal recognition will be coming forth next month.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Williams.
I have no report.
Trustee Milchick.
I echo Trustee Jay, but due to the expansiveness of tonight's agenda, I'm not going to give a report tonight.
Trustee Padberg.
Hi. Just a brief report. I was privileged enough to be able to attend all but two of the playoffs that Saddleback men's basketball team participated in, and they were incredibly exciting. You'll hear more about that next meeting. Irvine Valley men's basketball team made it to the playoffs, but they were not able to continue on. But next year, and I did attend the teapot show, and I think it was great. Sorry that I didn't get to see Tony. I believe I also saw Trustee Milchick there. So that's all of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to Saddleback College and get well quick to President Burnett. I've never attended a teapot show, and maybe next year. We'll see. And finally, just briefly to Ms. Doe, thank you for coming here and asking your questions. Little bit of information, some of the questions, I think, can be answered online where you can access our agendas. And also, I think you say you're a student at Saddleback. Saddleback Administration can also give you some answers to those particular questions. Typically, the Board is advised not to engage and specifically answer questions at this session, and I'm not going to do that, but I would like to direct you to those resources because I think those are good questions. You're probably not the only one in our audience that has those questions, and that's where I would suggest you go to try to get some of the answers. And if you're not satisfied with the answers, keep digging, because you have a right to know those things. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, want to offer my get well wishes to President Burnett. Sorry he's not here to receive congratulations. I want to offer my very genuine congratulations to him and to Saddleback College for this newly received $378,000 grant for medical assisting. This program, I think, is a showcase of progress for Saddleback College, and there's no question that health care has been of top interest to all of Americans in recent months, that we are engaged and involved in our district with such fine programs. And $378,000 of a grant are going to go a long way toward that. I salute Saddleback. Also, I'd like to tell you that I was delighted to receive the formal invitation, which I understand is extended to all of the community for the Saddleback College Veterans Memorial Dedication on Thursday, April 29 at 4:00 p.m. I received it and was so delighted that this is coming to fruition. Again, I salute President Burnett for his leadership and that of his entire Saddleback team and all those who have been working on this project. That I sat down on my computer and went through all of my emailed names reflecting on all those friends in the community who are veterans, and I sent a copy of this invitation to them. I hope each of you will do the same thing. Family and friends, community leaders, all who have served in the uniform of our nation. The responses that I've received back today have just been great. They think it's great. We should salute our veterans whenever we can. Please take the initiative to share with your friends who have served. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'll also try and be extremely brief in my remarks, since I know we've got a long meeting agenda, and it was nice of Professor Huntley to acknowledge those of us that had attended the tea party and those of you that had mentioned. This was a ceramics display and really not a tea party, and I will say, though, I did miss the dim sum, so sorry about that. But in any event, also, congratulations to Saddleback Men's Basketball and their conference championship, and a speedy recovery to President Burnett. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bailey.
I attended IVC's Black History Month as well as Saddleback's Multicultural Fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor Mather.
Thank you. I'd like to report on two items. First of all, with respect to the enrollment growth in this district in the last three years. According to the data that I've received from the district researcher, our enrollment has gone up by about 25% in terms of the head count, and in terms of the full-time equivalent students, the enrollment has gone up by about 20% in the past three years. Secondly, in terms of the full-time faculty hires, the data indicates that in the last three years, last year, in fact, we hired some 38 full-time tenure-track faculty members and about 19 of them this year, and we plan to hire 26 new full-time faculty members next year. All this hiring is taking place while the school districts around us have been engaged in teacher layoffs and/or staff furloughs and the like. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one Board request for reports, which is here for a vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, a discussion on this item. All right, let's vote on the item. Try again there. Trustee Milchick.
Oh, I did.
Yeah. It didn't take. All right. Matter carries unanimously. And again, a housekeeping detail, 4.1, which is our discussion item, has been moved to next month to allow us an opportunity to spend a little bit more time with the consultant interview process. However, rather than get to that right now, I am assured by my colleagues that we can get through the consent calendar quickly.
Second.
Moving seconded, any items to poll?
5.11.
5.11 is the only one to poll. Oh, Trustee Bailey. 510 and 511, otherwise, the bulk of the items have been moved and seconded. Let's vote on the balance of the consent calendar. Matter carries unanimously. 510, student, Trustee Bailey. I assume you pulled that for purposes of abstaining?
Approve.
Second.
Let's vote on it. And that carries with one abstention. And finally, 511, pulled by Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I'd like, sorry, I'd like to have the item divided. I've been consistently concerned about the amount of money for travel, and I think that we can certainly find plenty of conferences locally. So I'd like to vote separately on those two items. Divide the question.
All right. And that sounds like it's without objection, so let's vote. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the first item, which is the trustees' conference at the Hyatt Regency in Long Beach.
Has it been moved and seconded, Mr.?
Moved and seconded by trustees Padberg and Jay. Thank you for that. Matter carries unanimously, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the second one, which is the one to Washington.
Second.
Moving seconded, discussion seeing none, let's vote. That carries with one no vote. All right, at this point, we are... We pulled it.
6.9 and the...
No, 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 we'll get to those in a little bit. All right, at this point, we are going to advance item 9.1, which deals with the consultant hire in our chancellor's search process. And let me turn it to the Board's designee in that process, Dr. Bougaye. We have some consultants standing by. What is your pleasure in how we start this?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a total of five presentations from different consultants tonight. The process we went through to obtain them, we sent out proposals to a total of 32 different hiring consultant firms that specialize in executive searches. Of those, we received 10 responses with them, and of those 10 responses, five of them could come tonight to present to the Board of Trustees. The very first one presenting to us will be Community College Search Services, Dr. John Romo. He's presenting over here. But not Peoples, who's not related to Randy Peoples, but still a good person as well, like all Peoples are uncertain. She'll be assisting by passing out some different documentation to the Board. So if a consultant has information for the Board of Trustees, she'll distribute it up as well.
Right. And what guidelines have you given to the consultants?
I've told them 10 minutes for their presentation and then allow five minutes for questions, but I said if the Board of Trustees wants to go past that, they're certainly welcome to do so.
All right, just, yeah, so, you know, 10 minutes is generally what we've allotted, and then we'll have at them, frankly, for as long as we have relevant questions. All right. Up first, Dr. Jim Walker with CCS, and sir, begin.
Actually, Dr. Jim Walker is not able to attend today. He is, I am John Romo, and I will be working with Dr. Walker if we are selected to assist you in the search for the chancellor's position. Dr. Walker could not be here today because he had made a commitment to present a workshop on leadership at the ACHA Conference, and he extends his regrets, but he asked me to for our team and to make our presentation this afternoon. I think it's most important to start out in the short amount of time that we have, first of all, to thank you, Board members, for extending this opportunity to come and make our presentation to you. I think it's most important to emphasize this evening that our proposal, the Community College Search Services proposal, I will refer to it, given that we have so little time, as CSS, just to keep, CCSS, excuse me, just to help at the time. But our proposal, this, it's important to emphasize with, to you, as we do with all of our clients, that this is an opportunity for us to bring our expertise and our experience to facilitate a successful chancellor's search. We are not presenting to you, and we will not, if we are selected, implement for you a boilerplate approach. We are sensitive to the culture of each district, and our approach will be with this search, if we are selected, the same. This is your search; it is not CCCS's search. We do not dictate. We, as your consultants, will provide options for the Board and the search committee that are sensitive to your district. These options are based on what has worked successfully for us in the more than 100 searches completed by CCSS. I know that you've read your proposal, and the handout that you've received is just some pages that I have, we have extracted that we would like to emphasize in the proposal. The first is, the document that you have is headed Community College Search Services: Generic Components for Comprehensive Searches. I'd like to emphasize my comments in this presentation on focusing on four, what we refer to as critical factors, and these are delineated in the documents that you have before you. The critical, four critical factors that we see in a successful search are the services, obviously, that are prevented by the consulting service, in this case, Community College Search Services, the proven performance of the consultants you ultimately select, the specific recruitment strategies that are proposed by each, by the company that you choose, and the reference information that will be provided to the Board to be used in making the final selection. On this, this page one basically delineates our six- or seven-step process that we have used as our generic model in carrying out a community college executive leadership search. As your consultants in the development, number one, of the brochure, which is a critical piece, obviously, of search for a new chancellor, CCCS will take responsibility for the ultimate production, development of the brochure. But I want to emphasize that the content that goes into the brochure will be developed by the Board, staff, and the search committee, with ultimate decision-making and approval by the Board before any document is distributed to the community. Candidate recruitment is the second component of our model, and this will be an active and intensive national search. Because recruitment is such an important part of a successful search, I'm going to defer my detailed comments on that for just a minute, because it is delineating, I will be able to delineate more of the detail as I discuss critical factor number three. Candidate evaluation is another important component of our approach. We'll provide models for carrying out effective paper screening for the candidates, and Jim and I will develop, with HR staff and the committee, the criteria and the protocols and the ranking approach to be used in completing the application review. The candidate interviews are, will be led by Jim and by me, and we will be actively involved with the interview committee throughout the entire process. We'll work with the committee to develop the questions. The committee will decide which candidates to refer, to recommend to the Board, but Jim and I, as consultants, will manage the process. We'll provide materials, inform candidates, and coordinate scheduling. We'll serve as facilitators for all interviews, provide technical expertise and structured methods for selecting finalists. At the end of the process, we will take responsibility for informing the candidates of the outcome, and we will brief finalists that are being advanced to the Board for review. The fifth component of our model is an optional component. This is the forum. Some districts have chosen to hold public forums, community forums, on the college campus, either one, sometimes two. This is something that you would have, we would recommend that you... This is something that you would have, we would recommend that you consider as a board very seriously, we presented to you, because many college districts are using this approach, but there are many issues involved with community forums, and we would want to be, to provide you the pros and the cons of adding that to the activities through this search. Our reference checking and reports, Jim and I will conduct all the reference checking. Again, this is such an important part of the search, I'll make my further, some additional comments in just a minute. The last component of our approach is the board interviews with the finalists. As your consultants, we'll work with the board in developing the interview questions and materials, we'll also facilitate and manage the board interviews. We'll notify the finalists of the interview outcome, and in addition, we will assist in making the visit arrangements, site visit arrangements. This is something we strongly recommend, but again, that will ultimately be a board decision. Once a candidate is selected, we can provide assistance on contract issues. In some cases, we've even assisted with contract negotiations. Proven performance. Briefly, pages two through five are just a list of all of the successful searches, full searches and partial searches, that we have completed through CCS in the ten years of the firm's existence. We have only had one search that did not achieve completion successfully, and we've done over a hundred, yeah, seventy-nine, excuse me, over seventy-nine full searches and a number of partial searches, and that's, we feel, a very strong track record to present to you. The next document that you have after the listing of the searches that we have completed on page, the document that's entitled Community College Research Services Recruitment Strategies. Our recruitment strategies are, will be extensive, and we have developed a model that really does take, approaches this as a national search. Jim and I will lead the recruitment effort. However, we will have all nine of the CCSS consultants available to us to provide us names of prospective candidates. We will take advantage of input from the district in identifying prospective candidates. We will do public, working with staff in the human resources area. We will identify all of the effective publications in which we should, we will post ads for the position. We will use all of the technology-based listservs to make sure that every CEO, CBO, CSO, and CIO in the California community colleges and beyond gets an announcement about the opportunity and has contact information about us at CCSS if they would like further information. We also have two people positioned who have extensive national contacts that will be assisting us in getting the information disseminated nationally. We will, as I say, the, one of the critical factors or additional components of the search, the reach, reaching out to candidates is that Jim and I will personally call many candidates that we feel are at the top echelon of those that are available, both within the existing ranks of administration within the community colleges, but also candidates with whom we have worked on other searches as well. The la, the next document that you have, and you can see the, after this, the outreach effort, is the telephone interview forum, because another really critical component of the successful search is the effective follow-up on the references. And we will conduct telephone interviews, and you have listed there for you a sample of the telephone interviews. These will be, will collect, we will compile twelve, ten to fifteen interviews per finalist, and we will ask up to, from twenty-five to thirty-five questions through the interview process. And then we will ultimately submit a fifteen-to-twenty-page report to you, each, each board member, to be used as you deliberate in making final selection. The last document, and I'll be very brief, is just our proposed, very draft version of the chancellor's search schedule. And this is obviously just an idea of what we feel the schedule would be with the understandings we have of by which, when you would like to complete this search. I think the last note at the bottom of the page, that we, if the board wishes, would also, we are prepared to provide the trustees with updates on the status of the search process throughout. We feel that we are very strong. We are an extremely successful firm. We would really enjoy and appreciate working with you on this search. And if you select Community College Search Services, I can guarantee you that you will have a successful search, and we will work together in achieving that as a team. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Romo. Let me ask, are there any questions from my colleagues? Trustee Milchker.
Yes, I read.
Push your microphone.
Thank you. I read your proposal, and it's very impressive. I just have a question on the number of full searches conducted. On that sheet, it starts out with state chancellor. So then you conducted the search for the state chancellor of California.
Yes, we conducted the state chancellor search.
And then under chancellor, starting at Rancho Santiago Community College District, those are all the chancellor searches you conducted?
Yes.
And under the superintendent president, those are all the superintendent?
Those are, right. We're right now in the beginning stages of the interview process for Rancho Santiago. Jim Walker and I are working on that project at this time. I might also mention that in terms of the financial issues around our proposal, we are prepared, and I can tell you, that if we find throughout any stage of the process that we are not happy with the quality of the candidates that we have available to us, we will recommend to extend the pool. In some case, we have even are prepared to propose to you that if we do not find a candidate, a candidate that really suits your priorities and needs, meets your priorities and needs, or even a candidate who is hired by you and does not have a successful first year in that and has to be terminated, that we will conduct the interview, the search again for you with no consulting fee, only for the covering of the expenses for those searches.
That's excellent. That's a guarantee. I like that.
Also, if the, in, given these terrible financial times that you are all dealing with right now, although this search is intended to have the candidates to you in the fall, if it's, benefits the district to defer payment for the search into the next fiscal year, we would even be open to discussing that possibility.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Romo. I noticed from looking at the list that most of these seem to be public institutions. Have you done work for private institutions?
No, we are primary, we have, we are a community college search service, and we have worked with community college districts and the chancellor's office in our executive searches that we have carried out over the years.
We've had an expression by some members of an interest in broadening our search, not just within community college experience, but also private educators who might bring new change agent perspective to our district. How would you approach that?
I think in, in, with that kind of an intent, I think that especially in the publications that we would, in which we would place ads, those are publications that are really looked at, some of the critical ones, by higher education leaders in both the private and public sector. Very specifically, one of the most effective publications in which to place ads is The Chronicle for Higher Education. That is the tome that is looked to by everyone in higher education as a very solid periodical for information on higher ed in general, but with a very thick ads section on vacancies that are available. And that is one that we strongly recommend. We do not recommend placement in local newspapers. We have not found that to be effective at all, and it's very expensive.
Sounds like...
Chronicle and other publications, we'll get to the same, to the group that you're, that you're mentioning.
Sounds like you've been talking to trustee Williams. He quotes to us from The Chronicle about once a month. Could you tell us what is the best time of year to conduct a search for chancellor of a community college district? And if there is a best time of year, why?
That's a good question. I think with how, with how volatile things are right now in California, we're having a number of vacancies again, and we have a number of people who have been in the system for a while in executive-level positions, but who are prepared to now be moving on to the next level. And so I think, I really think that just about any time is a time that is appropriate and in which you can find a very high quality, the highest quality candidate. It will depend on our effectiveness in getting out to the candidates, in talking to the candidates personally about the quality of this district, the desirability of making a move, even if it is at a somewhat less-than-traditional time, to be able to take advantage of an opportunity to come to a district like yours. And I think, I think that's the critical factor. And so I don't think there's anything wrong in the timeframe that you, with the timeframe you, you have, we have discussed with staff that you're undertaking, and our job would be to deliver finalists that are all exceptional.
You say in, in your proposal package to us today, you give us a calendar, and it would indicate that perhaps around, prior to the end of October of this year, we might be looking at final decision-making.
Right.
Is that rushing the process? Is that your effort to accommodate indications that you've picked up from here? Or is this, I'm looking for an ideal situation.
Right.
I want you to have the time...
Yeah.
...to do the absolute best job. Could you do a better job if you had more time?
This, what we proposed, we think is a very doable and a very appropriate timeframe. We have received information from staff about some general parameters, but this is a timeframe that fits very well or very like, is very much like timeframes that we have used with other districts, and we think that it can be accomplished with a very successful outcome.
Can you tell us of the chancellor searches that you've done, not the, not the college president, the chancellor searches, say, in the last three years? How many candidates were in a pool that the schools or the districts have, rather, the districts have had the opportunity to look at?
I think that, that varies greatly. We have, we have had, I would say probably in the range of thirty to sixty applicants last, the last couple of years. We've seen an increase in the number of applicants, especially two years ago. I just retired in two thousand and eight, and there were, there was a large number of vacancies, and we had huge numbers of applicants for a while during that period. We have a search going on in Northern California right now, in which we've received sixty applications. We're carrying out a search, Jim and I, in a neighborhood district here in Southern California, in Orange County. And we have just, it has not closed for the preliminary interviews, and we already have about twenty applicants that have submitted paper, and April second is the first deadline. And we always know that many candidates will submit their papers right at the last minute. So we're going to get a good, strong candidate pool out of, for that search as well. So I would expect that for your district, and with the quality of the, what you do and the importance of, of your district in this community, of South Orange County District in this community, that, that you will have a very strong pool, and I would expect that we would have forty, fifty candidates at least that would be submitting their applications for the position.
My last question, Mr. Romo. Your first item to us was the issue of development of a brochure.
Right.
How far into the process time-wise would it be, do you think, to get to that brochure?
We would recommend getting to it right away. If you select us, we will get working on that right away, working with the HR staff first.
I got good news. We already have one. We approved it at our meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, very good. All right. Well, you're ahead.
We're ahead of the process. Trustee Jay.
That's so critically important for you to be the people who decide on what goes into the brochure, because that's as much of the statement about what you want in the position, it's the place where you make your statement about what you are.
Thank you.
And so I'm glad that you've already done that.
Trustee Jay.
Yes, I did notice a lot of colleges outside of California. I saw one from Dallas.
Mm-hmm.
Is that because you restrict applicants to the California area?
Oh, no, no. We are going to carry out a nationwide search. We have been primarily a California community college up in the early, the beginnings of CCSS. We're focused on California. We now have two consultants who are part of the CCSS team, who are working on states bordering California, and we are starting needing to broaden our searches outside of our own area. But all of our searches for a specific district, we approach as nationwide searches, and really, I've been in, I'm working on one right now, and I've been in communication with people from all over the country who are prospective candidates, and many of those people are going to be applying.
Two other questions. Do you get a considerable number of applicants whose higher education background has been four-year colleges or universities, or is that very rare?
With what I've seen personally, and I have to say that I am relatively new to the company, but what I have seen personally is that it is vast, is predominantly community college higher education leaders who are applying to serve in the chancellor or president's positions in the California community college system. I have not seen many...
What percentage of your pool, you said the pool here probably be forty or fifty at least, what percentage of the pool would come from within the state and what percentage would come from without?
Based on my recent experience, again, with the company, I would say that probably in the neighborhood of sixty to seventy percent will be from California, and the remainder from out of state. What I've seen in terms of out-of-state applicants, they tend to be candidates who are applying, who are in border states to California. But we do have applicants from back east, Midwest, the south as well. But it, it is predo, you will, I think, we will find, it's pretty much of a typical pattern that most of your candidates are going to be from within our own system. But we have excellent leaders in our system who could step in and take on this very challenging role.
Okay. Last question. What percentage of those who've become the chancellor or president have come from your pool of applicants from without the state?
On that one, in the way you've asked it in terms of overall...
Yeah.
...you're going to have to defer on that and ask, I could definitely get that, but again, being new to the company, that's something that Jim Walker, who has worked with CCSS for eight years, or six years, that he could answer much more effectively. But, but I wouldn't want to throw out a number on that one, because I am new.
Okay. Thank you. It'll all come out.
It will.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, just had a couple of questions. One is, how many searches will you and your team be handling at one time? What other searches have you got ongoing?
This search, Jim and I are involved with one search right now, but really, your search will be beginning just about, just as we're closing the work, the search we're working on right now. So we will be free, and if we are selected, we will be your consultants, and we will be focusing on this project. We will, I won't say that we might not take on another project, but you will be our priority. But we have enough candidates, consultants in our company that, and we manage our business in a way where we do not overextend. I think a lot of our track record is, when you hire us, you have us. Jim and I both, Jim lives in Westlake Village, I live in Santa Barbara. I don't mind at all driving down to Orange County when I'm needed, and you will have our full attention. If we take on any other work for the company, I can assure you, you will, it will not be at the expense of our attention for your district.
I'm assuming that the other search that you mentioned that's about, that's just closing is the Rancho?
Yes, that's true. That is correct.
And are you able to tell us what sort of a pool they drew for that search?
That's the one I was mentioning, and I didn't want to use the name at the time, but it's not a secret. But that's the one that, the first close, it's open until filled, which we recommend is a good approach. But we did announce, in the announcement, we did indicate that there, the interview committee would interview candidates in May, early May, and that for candidates who want to be considered in that process, which really is the kickoff of the process that very likely will produce the candidate that the board will select, April second is the deadline. We've just received an update a couple of days ago, and we have, I believe, about twenty people who have already submitted their applications. I've been on the phone to probably forty candidates, and I would say out of the forty candidates, I would say thirty are applying. They told me anyway, they're going to apply. I will tell you, again, and this is because of the type of company that CCSS is, several of those candidates were finalists and other very high... of those candidates were finalists in other very high-level searches that we were carrying out here in Southern California, and of those candidates, in, not too, from not too far away, I called probably eight of the people who were finalists but did not make it into the final three for interview with the board, and out of eight, six of them said that they would be applying for the Rancho position. So, those are obviously candidates that have already been tested, gone through a very rigorous first-round search, just didn't make it into the final three for the district. And so...
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. We'll do, if you hire us, I can promise you, you're going to get our full attention. We will work with you. I just want to say again, we do not come in with a boilerplate methodology. We work with your people, your systems, your culture, and we're really pulling together the best three finalists to submit for you for final selection. Thank you very much.
Next?
Next, we have McNaughton Associates, and with that, we have the president of the company, Sperry McNaughton, presenting to the board.
Thank you.
You have ten minutes for a presentation, and I can't promise you that we'll keep it to five minutes in questioning.
I do have a PowerPoint presentation. If you give me just a second, I'll get it set up. My firm is McNaughton Associates. We are education specialists. McNaughton Associates has been in the professional search business for twenty-four years. We now have offices in California and New York, and we work extensively throughout the nation. Our search successes cover the entire academic spectrum. Last year, for instance, I successfully secured a new chancellor for the Riverside Community College District after they had failed twice using national search firms. Let me share with you some information about the consultants that will be working with you. I received an MBA from Columbia University in New York. My search experience includes corporate, health services, and twenty-four years in education. I run the California home office of McNaughton Associates. My new partner, Dr. Sean Finelli, was president for twenty-eight years of Nassau Community College, the largest community college in the state of New York. He's been a board member of numerous national education industry organizations. In fact, the reason that he's not standing next to me here tonight is that he is in Colorado as a board member and an executive committee, committee member of the National Junior College Athletic Association at their annual meeting. Dr. Finelli has also received many academic awards. For instance, he is the only college or university president to have been awarded the William J. Brennan Award for Academic Freedom from the Thomas Jefferson Center in Washington, D.C. Let's talk about how we will enhance your search. We will spend the next several weeks visiting your campuses to learn firsthand the specific culture of the South Orange County District. We will interview board members, senior administrators, faculty, staff members, union representatives, students, and key community constituents. We need to know the key issues facing the college, such as enrollment, facility infrastructure, accreditation, et cetera. We need to know what the distinctions and what the upcoming challenges are of the district. We will work with you to design a search that will aggressively reach out and attract the best candidates wherever they may be. We do not run a passive advertising-based search process. We will use the state-of-the-art technologies that you have already invested in to showcase the district. For instance, we will not ask applicants to send reams of paper. Instead, we will ask applicants to apply for the college's online application process. The search committee members can then access that information anytime on a password-protected basis from their own computer. Another example is interviews. Paying for a large pool of preliminary candidates to travel to South Orange County for interviews is a time-consuming and costly old way of doing it. We already have video conference technology and facilities. We use these now for distance learning and remote teaching. Candidates can go to a remote studio in their hometown and visit electronically on a two-way interactive basis with our search committee. Moreover, we can record the interviews. Why is this important, you may ask? Well, if a committee member for any reason has to miss an interview, the next day, we pop the interview tape in a VCR, and we're back in business without losing a step. And later in the process, if one of you board members wants to watch an interview before making a decision, it will be available to you. Finally, during campus interviews, we can broadcast public presentations made by the candidates as streaming video over the Internet, so that those unable to attend can watch wherever they are. It's our feeling that South, South Orange County Community College is a modern, leading-edge college. Let's demonstrate that fact to prospective candidates. Now, let me ask you a question. Don't you think that the best candidates realize that they are in a highly competitive process? We are evaluating them, and they are evaluating us. Too often, the difference between success and losing a desired candidate is lack of communication. We will consistently maintain active and accurate dialogue with candidates of interest, and then feed this information back to the South Orange County decision-makers on a reasonable and a regular basis. We don't like to lose a candidate. Neither do you. That's why we're successful. And you know what? When we are successful, you are successful. We fully understand that our charge is to have a new chancellor in place in September two thousand and ten. Now, the handout I gave you earlier is a detailed search schedule to achieve this goal, but let me, let me share some key dates with you. We start in mid-April with a meeting of the search committee. A month and a half later, the search committee selects a pool of applicants for the first round of interviews. Those video conference preliminary interviews will be held two weeks later. Based on these interviews, the committee can select the three to five candidates that will be invited to campus interviews. Those campus interviews will start at the end of June and be finished in mid-July, so that the committee can recommend their pool of finalists to the Board of Trustees in closed session at your regular July twenty-sixth meeting. The board then selects your final candidate. That individual and spouse can then visit the South Orange County Community College District the last weekend in July. If all goes well, contract negotiations will be completed, and then, in September two thousand and ten, the search will be concluded. The new chancellor will take office. I hope that I've been able to demonstrate how McNaughton Associates will be able to significantly enhance your search. Thank you.
Mr. McNaughton, thank you very much for the presentation. Let me see if any of my colleagues have questions. Trustee Fuentes.
Mr. McNaughton, when you take up a search effort for a district typically, do you have input to the design and development of the brochure utilized by the district?
Trustee Fuentes, we live in a very different time. Much of the effect of doing a good search is electronic nowadays. Printed materials are expensive and don't have the same impact. I would focus my attention with your creative technology people and build a website that will not only reflect everything that you want to put into a brochure, but will be full of nice, pretty, attractive pictures. Please look around you. This is one of the most beautiful campuses I've ever seen. I spent much of the afternoon on your Irvine Valley campus. I can tell you, it is a wow of a campus. We use the electronic media to show our potential prospective candidates just what it looks like, much, much better. Now, yes, we will put together a brochure, but my real focus and, and advice to the committee would be to, to work the electronic side of the equation. That's what's happening, and that's what everyone uses.
Whether that be electronic or printed, tell me the process that you utilize to develop the content. I'm not so concerned about whether it's printed on, what kind of paper, or what kind of ink is used, but the content.
The content would be formulated in, in two ways. One, I would work very closely with your human resource and your public relations people, and I would bring them in to work with the search committee. The search, we would, we would work up a draft, pass it through the search committee, and when they approve of the content, we go to publication, whether that publication is on paper or electronically.
Can you tell me how you would integrate education leaders from the private sector into this search?
That is quite a challenge. Yeah, it is also a challenge getting four-year educators to look at the two-year spectrum, the community college. There are, the way you do it is to sit down with the board, sit down with your senior administrators, find out exactly what you're looking for, and then go out and find those people. And I would use the knowledge base here at the board, and frankly, from probably some of your community constituents, to give us some direction as to people that would be logical. It, it's not terribly logical. You'll be very frustrated to try to find business leaders from, say, the Midwest and expect them to come to California, learn the methodology of how operations in California. On the other hand, there are many California folks that might be logical. You people here know who those people are. My job is to go out and get them involved. Does that answer your question?
It helps me give insight to, to your thoughts. I appreciate that. How, how large have the pools been for your last chancellor search or two?
Let me ask you this question. Are you concerned with the size of the pool or the quality of the pool?
I'm concerned with both, and I, I think broadness might give birth to quality as we shake it through.
In, in my twenty-eight years of experience, you usually get pools in the, I'd say forty-five to sixty range. Of those, perhaps ten, maybe fifteen, if you're lucky, are those that you'd want to take a look at and, and boil that down. Usually, what I recommend, that we do preliminary interviews of eight individuals, and then reduce that down to anywhere between three and five that you bring back to campus. My job is to make sure that the quality in your pool is absolutely top-notch, and, and the spectrum is, is broad-based, so that you can then make the proper decision. I find that if the quality is good, the decisions will be good. And I've done searches that actually had fifteen candidates, and we did fabulously well because we had darn good fifteen candidates.
Let me jump in with a couple of quick questions. Wanting to know primarily whether we call it a brochure, or a website, or a combination of both, whether the timeline you've given us is, is realistic in terms of if, if you had to develop that website or that brochure, starting from your hire date, you know, which, which would be soon, is this timeline realistic still?
Very much so. I, it would, it should not take you more than two weeks to do that.
And let me add, and maybe you were in the back of the room when I mentioned it earlier, but the board has already approved a brochure. I don't know whether you've had an opportunity to look at it, but I would be curious why you would think it appropriate to run the brochure or the contents of the website through the committee, as opposed to getting, since it's the board's hire of a chancellor, getting the board input. The committee is to do the interviews, but isn't it, in your view, the board that has to do the hire that would be responsible for the content of the brochure or the website?
Yes.
So, the reason for taking it through the committee is what?
The committee is the first step of evaluation, and if the committee has not completely bought into every, every direction and requirement, we're going to get opinions all over the place. I want to bring everybody together and make sure that everybody is marching on the same, same step. Let me explain to you, if, if I may, President Wagner. A search is, is one of the most critical times for an institution because it is the one time that you're out there exposing yourself to the world. All right? They are judging you on every, everything that goes on. They want to know how professional, have they thought these things out? Do we have the resource base? Otherwise, they're not going to commit to themselves. I want to make sure that every time we go out and talk to a candidate, every, every contact, every answer, every, every statement made is professional and reflects you here at South Orange County. And in order to do that, it takes work upfront. Once we've decided on that work, we move very quickly and, and show it. What I get feedback from candidates, especially at the chancellor level, the, the difference is exactly that. It's, and I said earlier, I will be in constant contact with our candidates. That is absolutely true, because we're not the only person. When they've decided to make application to us, chances are they're going to be looking at other people. And, and in order to make them focus on us, we have to be better than our competition. And I will say that I've been very, very effective in doing that, and the reason for it is that my committees, my search committees are professionals, and, and my job is to make sure that they are professional and, and look good. In all honesty, I have one job, and my job is to make you all successful.
Let me ask it this way, because I don't think that answers my question. Is your view of the role of the committee to find the best possible chancellor that the committee can find, or is the committee to find the best possible chancellor consistent with the direction and charge it's been given by the Board of Trustees?
Your second explanation.
Then, why does the committee have a role in developing the brochure, or the website, or anything along those lines?
President Wagner, that's your call. I work within your structure. If you turn to me and say, this is the way I want it done, I'll work within that structure. Traditionally, it starts both at the top and the middle, and comes together somewhere in the middle. I don't have control of that.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you for your presentation, Mr. McNaughton, first of all. I'm, want to leave, have you help alleviate some concerns that I may have about the depth of your organization. I noticed that it's basically three individuals, you, your partner, and one other individual, that you've indicated in here that you do restrict the searches to three or four at any one time. So, maybe you could speak a little bit to the number of searches that you've presently got going on, and, you know, alleviate the concerns that I've, that I've indicated to you.
You're looking for a chancellor. Why would you want someone who is not completely involved and completely familiar with your institution out there representing you? If you're talking to a firm that says, we have ten people, and if I get too busy, I'll turn to Bill Jones over here, and Bill Jones knows nothing about... turn to Bill Jones over here," and Bill Jones knows nothing about you, is that the kind of person you want representing you? I'm saying, if you decide to work with McNamont &amp; Associates, I'm that person. I have 28 years' experience. I'm dealing at the chancellor level. When you deal with a chancellor, a chancellor expects someone that understands things at that level, not an underling. I never turn to someone below me and have them doing it. I do every contact, every thing that that person hears comes basically from me and my partner, Sean Finelli. Now, you asked how many searches. I just finished a search in Michigan, and right now I am open. Will I stop at one search? No. We will handle up to three searches at a time. Generally, we have one to two searches going. Beyond that, I don't have time to give you the kind of support that you demand, so I restrict it that way.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, sir. Very much appreciate your presentation. And Dr. Bigay, next.
Our next presenter will be from PPL, Dr. Don Avril.
I am the Vice President of Southern California Services for Professional Personnel Leasing. We know it's a long name, we just call it PPL. Tonight, we are going to be talking to you about your search and the needs that you have here at South Orange County Community College District. I'm going to be talking about a tailored search, about professional consulting, about our backup, our recruitment network, the diversity, our confidentiality, and our competitive pricing. So those are the areas you will see us talking about. I know that you have prepared your brochure already. Normally, in a full search, the way we present them, PPL will do a profile on the district and its colleges. We like to obtain not only the input from the board itself, but from the constituents of the college and from those who are in the community. You have a book with you, and one of the methods that we use is that I do a survey method, and you will find the report that was prepared for the Barstow Community College when I did that particular search. And as you can see, we sent that out to the community, to the military, to all of the constituent groups. And from that, we were able to build the profile. Now, you have a lot of the profile questions in. In fact, I received as part of our preparation for this search, a listing of some 38 traits that you wanted in the chancellor, and areas that would be going into that final document. I will admit to the fact that I did not realize that you had the brochure approved already. And so much of my presentation is oriented to narrowing down on how you get there and how you make an effective brochure. We can work around any of those things that we need to. We develop a tight line that meets your needs in the district and the constituents involved. We think it ought to be a full and open process. We realize that this is the board's one employee, and that the important thing is that this person fit your needs and that there be a match between the skills of that chancellor and the desires of the board in that leader. We want to provide support to the search and the brochure and the procedure of the board in the process. We build on district and college efforts. We design searches that will provide for cooperation with the district and the college. We look at each of the institutions. We try to get full involvement in the process. We provide assistance throughout the search, and we... No limits or visits by any of our consultants. Some firms we know will come in, and they will tell you that you have a limit of five visits. We will be back as many times as we need to and available for the board and for the committee. Our consultants are available to be assigned. If principal consultants are not available, we have had the bad luck of one time having one of our consultants pass away during the middle of the search. We have since then built a procedure in our process that there's always a backup so that we can fill in and complete that search. This is a... One of the things that I like to do in a search is make sure that we are providing the type of support material. You won't be able to see this in the document, but if you go back a couple of pages behind it, you will find a list of the resources that we have identified for Harbor College when we were doing the Harbor College search. I try to get everything that we can available to our candidates so that they can get access online from the committee. We set up all of that material with your human resources and your technology people so that all resources, whether they be community resources, whether they be district resources, links to the chancellor's office, and all of that information is available immediately to the candidate. We try to guide a candidate through the process so that when they come to you, they are ready to fulfill this obligation. I serve as the principal consultant, will serve as a principal consultant on this job. You need to be aware that I have had eight and a half years as the chancellor, the Vice Chancellor of Educational Services for the Coast Community College District. So I've had long-term interest and knowledge of the Orange County community. I've had eight years as chancellor of the San Bernardino Community College District. And I have had extensive consulting in a number of areas, including coaching of executive managers and working with accreditation. We know California well. Our team knows California well. Our folks are all successful CEOs who are now in the search business, and we tend to know California well, and as a result of this, we can produce good pools for you. We have recent and extensive national contacts. We work with a number of the major universities. I have a pool of people that we refer to when we are developing a search that are noted. George Boggs from AACC is one of our contacts. We work with the League for Innovation and many other organizations. I was on the CCLDI Board, the Community College Leadership Development Initiative, which worked primarily in developing future leaders for California, and have many contacts from that experience with the leading doctoral programs within the state of California. So you're getting people that really know the community college business. I also have 11 years of human resources experience. I'm immediately available, and we train all of our staff and continue to work on improving the processes that we use in our searches. I will be having a team assistant. This is my backup, Grace Mitchell serves as the president of PPL. She provides continuity in the event of an unanticipated absence, assist in recruiting and reference checking. She's experienced with executive searches and has done several searches in her time with the company, and is also a former CEO. We do advance on that advice on advertising. David has already developed a very long and strong list of advertising sources. Most of the contacts that he has identified and has shared with you already are ones that we have worked with. In addition to that, we back that up. We have a pool of about 200 folks that we know are actively in the search market at any given time and work with them individually. We use email, phone, call listing of potential candidates and sources. PPL consultant lists and leadership institutes and associations I've already talked about in our international contacts. We are a company that has experience in providing diversity. We have a number of clients, and within the document, you will see a listing, in our actual proposal, you will see a listing of the diversity of our candidates. Here are some of our previous searches. We did Siskiess, Las Pecitas, West Valley Mission, Mendocino Lake, Gavlin, Victor Valley, Shasta, Mendocino, Palomar Community College, Cabrillo College, San Jose Evergreen, we've done twice, Monterey Peninsula, Feather River, Hartnell, Siskiess. I did Barstow. I just finished Glendale, and I'm currently working on Harbor. So those are the lists. We can assure you that our process is high on confidentiality. We work on those areas. Our pricing is set. We will work with you on adjustments in terms of how far you want to go with the search. And we need to let you know that we have never had to extend a search at this point. I will close at this point and not go through the listing of why you use PPL, but it is in your material.
Thank you, sir. And questions from any of my colleagues? Trustee Thuenzis, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I wonder, for the sake of my colleagues, I have been drawing on 10 questions, which I've prepared in advance to help meet through this process, and I've been trying to pick up on all of them, and maybe I'll share the 10 questions with you, and maybe that will engage board members a bit more. Can you tell me how you would make a better effort than others might to solicit applications from people in four-year and in particular, private institutions to come take a look at this job?
Part of that is in working with many of these national folks that we do work with. We work with a number of universities already, and we are going not only to the typical California universities, but we're going into a number of universities on the East Coast and in the Midwest. And we draw up on them. If, in fact, the criteria that we develop is open to getting into university people, we can support that and get them into the pool. We work with the resources and the training areas, and have key people in each of those organizations that we can contact and assist us in identifying those people.
Do you think there's a time of year that is better for seeking a chancellor in the marketplace?
Yes, I do.
People live with academic calendars in this business.
I think that's an important... Your comment is important to remember. If you will... Let me share something with you. Behind my presentation, the very first chart you have is the existing California openings right now. I have, for a period of nine years, tracked all of the openings in California for California Community College Chief Executive Officers. There are currently 19 openings on the market. Those are active searches that are in place. There are seven retirees that will come up for openings at the end of the year, and then the rest of those folks have been placed during this year. So you can see the number of turnover. We've had that figure up as high as 48 openings in the state of California at one time. I will tell you that, on the average, that the quality of the person that you want is not going to be a person that's going to want to walk away from their job in the middle of a term. And so my advice would be, at any rate, that you get yourself so that the person starts it, and most likely, even if you were to select by September or October, by the time you got that person, you're going to be into January anyway. But you should make it so that the person can enter the term, because most people are not going to apply if they think they have to walk away.
So our rhythm, our timing...
Wait, 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 hang on. Your microphone just cut out. I don't know if you turned the button off or what.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking is that, so setting an artificial constraint on time might be detrimental to finding the ideal candidate. I mean, extra time that gives the process an opening more like January than August, or more like February than September, could well be beneficial to the process.
I would say yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further questions, we will thank you and ask for our next consultant, please.
Our next consultant comes from Academic Search, Dr. Gary Owens.
Owen, can we clear that PowerPoint, please, before we start? Just a minute.
My PowerPoint is being powered down the table there with the blue folders. Well, while those are going down, I wanted to thank you very much for inviting Academic Search this evening. It's nice to be out here in Southern California, joining you. My name is Gary Owens. My background is primarily in... It's not in community colleges. It's in four-year institutions. I finished my academic career as dean at Texas Tech University. Prior to that, I was at Northern Arizona University as a dean. But my academic background is in the arts, so I've worked a lot with both provosts and presidents throughout my entire career, have enjoyed it, got to know what they were doing, got to know them as individuals. And way back in my career, started out as a public school instrumental music teacher in Madison, Wisconsin, so it's been a very interesting career. I've been with Academic Search four years now. Currently working on a presidential search at North Dakota State University in Fargo, North Dakota. Just was there, in fact, yesterday. We're getting to the point where we're closing that search out. But I think it's an interesting sort of intermingling of things here. This is a very interesting possibility for me, because I've worked a lot with community colleges throughout my entire career. We were talking in the warm-up room about some of those things. I'd spent some time in my first college job, working with Mott Community College in Flint, Michigan, where we put together some collaborative programs with the community college there and our four-year institution, really developed some interesting relationships. So I really would enjoy this opportunity to be able to assist you with this and could bring the flavor of the research institution to this mission as well. What I'd like to focus on a little bit tonight is just in your... What you've got there is our basic proposal, which you may or may not have seen, but I'd like to start with page four. And it's kind of the pathway that we take forward-looking for any sort of administrative position that we're assisting with. What we'd like to do, and I understand that you have an advertising piece developed, but it's important for all of us at Academic Search to get acquainted with the individual college district, in this case, the individual campuses, the people, the program, so that we know what you're all about. And that's particularly important, because that's really what I use, or any of my colleagues use, to recruit. We try to find people that are going to fit with what you're doing. We don't have lists of, you know, our 200 favorite candidates, although I suppose probably people have those, but we all know that not every one of those persons is going to be comfortable in this sort of position, will succeed, will thrive, and this sort of thing. So we spend a great deal of time getting acquainted with all of you and what you're doing. Having the marketing piece is wonderful, because that's something we can go with right away. From that, as I said, we build a candidate pool that will be people that hopefully you will find at the end to be really interesting, intriguing, exciting persons to be able to do this new position. And we like to think that we're working with you. We're consultants. We will offer ideas, but at the same... We will offer ideas, but at the same time, this is your search. This is something that you are controlling and to the extent that we appreciate that, we understand that, and we want to work with you in terms of that process. As we do the advertising, obviously, you know, the question, as I came in later on in terms of recruiting people nationally, I think there are going to be a lot of people who are going to be coming in contact with this position through the advertising, who might be very interested in it, who maybe don't know a lot about. I get calls all the time from people saying, you know, "Gary, I don't know a lot about this position. Can you help me with this?" And of course, everything we've talked about plays into that. The importance, one of the things I wanted to talk to you about in particular is that we have 32 consultants at Academic Search, many of whom have had community college experience. And we act as a team, the best sort of sense of a team in terms of our approach. If I'm helping you with this search, I can go to the people who are, who have some community college experience to get some ideas from them, but I can also then go to others who have a four-year graduate school experience. And I think you could probably find some wonderful candidates in that pool as well. So we try to pool our resources, pull together all of the ideas that all of us have. Generally, what I do is to send out a snippet of your advertising material so that you, you know, my colleagues can see that and they can give me some good advice and counsel in terms of what we're doing. If you look on page, well, page six is basically the actual team that's mounted to support you in the search. And yes, we do also have backups. I, you know, they're, they're not necessarily listed here, but I would, I would think that there are a couple of colleagues that I've worked with who, if for some reason I were not able to continue, hopefully that won't be the case, but it is something that we want to protect ourselves against. But I will be the person to be with you at every point during the search. We also do not have any limit in terms of the number of times we would come out here. Generally, five or six times is usually what it takes, but sometimes it is more. So I'll be ready to be out here at a moment's notice and be able to help you with that. Thirty-two consultants. We have a researcher, a person who assists me with all of the paperwork. It's important to understand, though, that the contact point with all of your candidates is through me. I don't have anyone going out, you know, if you wanted me to do the reference calling, I would be doing it for you. I don't farm that out. I think it's very important that the perception that you get of these calls is based in some sort of experience level. My researcher is a wonderful person who can do wonderful things to help, but he's not the kind of person who really can get into the kinds of details that you need. Then very quickly, the search process, I'll let you read through it. It's not all that much different from anything else I'm sure you've seen this evening, but the important part of it is the personal contact that you would have with me and through the Academic Search team. And I'll let you ask questions now, since I know you've had a very long evening already.
Trusty Fuentes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can you tell us, in your opinion, is there a better time of year to be recruiting candidates for chancellor?
I wasn't, I became aware of your schedule earlier on that you obviously like to start fairly soon and finish in the fall. I think from my standpoint, I would agree that our academic calendar pretty much is the boundary that we have to set on searches. I mean, often what we'll do is that if we start something in, say, August, it generally ends in December with an appointment. If we start in December, generally it ends in May. I've done some searches that go over the summer, but it's only because the institution has people available throughout the summer. One particular presidential search had, campus was going the entire year. And they did that, you know, consciously on behalf of the students because they wanted to be able to see something going on all the way. And many of the students came back during the summer and were full-time students in the summer. So I think to the extent that, I mean, if you started something in now and wanted to end in August, it could work. There could be people there available, but I think it would be better to start and end at, you know, sort of around the boundaries of the academic term. And generally, that's a semester.
It was suggested by one of the presenters that when you look at folks in jobs or responsibilities, the kind of quality people that you want to recruit for a chancellor's job, they'd be not the kind of people that would abandon their current task midterm. So they need time to exit responsibly in order to come aboard in a fashion. Do you think that we would do better if we had more time in this process, if we weren't under the gun of an August or a September to have the person on the job, if we could go into the new year?
My advice would be to not try to shortchange the development of the pool. I'm doing a search right now that because of the timeline, we started in December and we are going to finish in May. So that's six months. There was some concern there that we didn't have enough time to be able to build the pool. I think it was sufficient time, but I'm not sure that it was totally enough. In our, in our business, the networking that people do, people will call people, they'll talk to other people, they'll, they'll meet someone at a conference. You'll get a lot of that going on and some of that just has a long gestation period. It just takes a while. So from, from the standpoint of this search, I would think we could certainly begin now, but to take the, you know, take the opportunity to, to build the pool. Sometimes searches have a silent phase and an active phase. So you've got, you know, somebody out recruiting, but the position isn't actually advertised. You're just sort of testing the waters. But then if you could start hitting the ground running, let's say in August and finish in December, that I think would be a very successful time. You could have someone then starting in January. I think that, you know, almost anything will work for people, but I think it is very difficult for someone to leave midstream. I had one case in a presidential search where the appointment was made in January and they actually started in March, but I think the home institution for the person that just felt, well, they, their heart was in the new place, let them go ahead and be there and they would take care of appointing an interim, so.
Am I reading right on page 14 that you've done the chancellor's search in the past year at Foothill DeAnza?
One of my colleagues did, yes.
Do you know how large that pool was?
I can find out. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
Trusty Lang.
Yes, I was specifically interested in how many chancellor searches that you've actually conducted and then if you could tell me a little bit about the success of those candidates in terms of their tenure in that position.
I've done, I'm on my fifth president or chancellor search, depending on the nomenclature. One was a chancellor's search, but the system had a president. That was in the University of Minnesota system. They're all still in office. This is my fourth year with Academic Search, so the first person, the first search I did was a presidential search, Governor State University in Illinois. And that person is still there, has done very well. Every one I've, I've done, and I think I'm on my 23rd or 24th search right now, is still, is still there, still going strong. We have a guarantee if, if something goes awry in that first year, we'll stick with you and for expenses only and we'll get, we'll get the person we need to get. I think that the only thing about hiring is that if, if people are not totally, totally sure that it's the right decision, it's best, I think, to extend because the worst thing that can happen is to have the wrong person appointed and find out about it later. So I think that, you know, that's what I rely on you, obviously, for all of that because you're the, I mean, I know a lot of the people. I think they could do a great job, but it's together that we'd be able to make those decisions. And, but all of the, all of the people that I've worked with are still there, going strong. And so am I.
Follow. Follow. One of the things that I noticed was that your fee proposal was quite a bit higher than some of the others. And I'm wondering, is that because of more high-touch approach, I guess? We heard an earlier candidate that talked more about using teleconferencing and other kinds of techniques like that. Perhaps you can address that.
Well, that is our typical fee, but we're willing to negotiate. And I've done a couple of those negotiations on searches this year. I mean, we understand what kinds of constraints that, that all of us are under. And we'd like to help and we'll do everything we can to do to help. We do have an electronic format, but you know, I believe a lot in, you know, I mean, email is the way most people can be contacted these days, but it sets up phone calls. And, you know, making a cold call is, is interesting, but sometimes when you're trying to recruit people, sometimes they don't want to have their administrative person know that you're necessarily talking about that sort of thing. So I think the email route works well, but I spend a lot of time on the phone. I love it. I love recruiting. I think that I could bring a whole lot to that. There's, there's an energy there that I really find interesting. I guess it probably goes back to all the years I was recruiting students and getting people involved, but I love to sell the institution. That's why I want to know more about it before we get started on the whole thing. But it's, it's very enjoyable and I think that we could do a lot for you. There's, there's not much that's beyond that except for expenses and, you know, we would do background checks, obviously, and there's a fee for that because the people we do that with charge a fee. But generally, that's at the, at the very end of things when we're looking at maybe five to six people and so that's manageable. And in terms of my, I mean, I'm coming from the Dallas area, it's true, but there are a lot of, you know, relatively inexpensive ways for me to get here.
Trusty J.
Yes, I'm just looking through the California institutions that you've done. I notice about half of them are four-year institutions, mostly private colleges like Whittier, Westmont, University of the Pacific, Scripps, Oxy, Mills, Menlo, Harvey Mudd, Claremont, Claremont Graduate School and so forth.
Right.
I just wondered, how long have you guys been in the community college business?
Well, we've actually been doing it quite a bit of time and there's, there's a colleague I have in the, in the Dallas area who, who does almost all community college searches. But, you know, the strength of Academic Search, as I mentioned earlier, is being able to pool our resources and sometimes people can't, can't do that. I mean, they don't have time to be able to take on another search. And, but, but, but the, the interest is there, the, the energy is there, the names are there, and I think we can be a great help to you on that. I think we've got a great process in terms of what we do. It's not, again, not all that much different, but I think that what we try to do is to pool together our resources of all 32 of us for you.
Okay. That was my other question. You say you have 32 team leaders, so to speak, on a particular hiring.
Well, I'd be the team leader, but they're part of a team, yeah.
Okay. But are two or three of them community college specialists or?
Yes.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me date myself. Any relation to the guy from Laugh-In?
I get that all the time. The other one is the Gary Owen March. I don't know if you've, you've heard that one. I have an S at the end, but two Rs, that has two Rs. Yeah, I, there was one time going through a TSA line at, at the airport that a guy, you know, talked to me about that, but he said, "I'm glad to know you spell your name the right way." And he, I looked at his badge and it was Gary with two Rs.
Mr. Owens, thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the time. Next.
Our last presenter tonight is from the Association of Community College Trustees is Dr. Judith Redwine.
First, let me say that I deeply appreciate your commitment to America's community colleges, especially as evidenced by your presence and your attention here tonight. I know it's been a long night for you and you're all still there, so I, I really do appreciate that. I'm here representing ACCT, the American Association of Community College Trustees, and I'm sure that all of you have had experience with ACCT. ACCT, of course, focuses primarily on community college and they have been in the business of doing searches for presidents and chancellors for 26 years. I'm particularly representing Dr. Narcisia Polonio. If you look on page two, you will see her information. She is stuck in New Mexico and was unable to get here, so she called me and asked me to come over and present this proposal to you. As for my background, I've been involved with ACCT as a candidate and as a chancellor, I hired ACCT to do searches. I have also done four interims under the leadership of ACCT. And I'm now helping to do these presentations, particularly in California. I have experienced as a CEO in community colleges for 18 years in four states, Indiana, Illinois, California, and Ohio. So I'm definitely a practitioner. I also have had 10 years' experience in higher education, the university, and I've also had two years' experience at the state level. So I'm here tonight to go over the ACCT process for searches. So let's begin on page four. There are five parts. And again, at this time, having been through four of these presentations, I'm sure that they're all similar, so I'm not going to do much with that, except to emphasize, which I feel is a very key strength of ACCT, and that is the candidate recruitment. ACCT, without a doubt, has the largest black book, so to speak, for candidates for community college presidents and chancellors because of the length of time they work, have worked in the search process, but also because of the many and varied contacts that they have with community college people. And finally, on the bottom, the selection. I want to emphasize that it is the board that makes the selection, certainly not ACCT. The process on page five laid out, if you look at page 14, you can see the timeline. And I believe the timeline will accommodate your goal of having someone onboard by October. And I certainly concur with the previous speaker that it is not necessarily an optimal time to pull somebody out of a job in October, but it could be done. Having served in a number of interim positions, I know the options that are there for the colleges when they want to replace a person for just a six- or 12-month basis. They can go and, there's a whole bank of interims who are out there who could come in and keep things moving. So you don't need to worry about that. ACCT, as the previous speaker indicated, provides assistance onsite. We will come as many times as you need us to come to provide the kind of support that you or the search committee needs to enable this to happen. Facilitating the selection for the campus involvement, we believe a great deal in involving the campus and that is a process that has to be managed and ACCT does a good job of managing that. The whole idea is to position the board to be able to make a well-informed decision and to find somebody who fits your situation. The first part, of course, is doing an institutional analysis and that is because we believe that South Orange, as every other community college, is truly unique. What works in one place will not necessarily work in another. And it's a healthy process for the institution to go through an analysis of what its needs are and what type of person would best fit these needs. The incoming pro-chancellor... The incoming pro-chancellor, we build, the committee builds a yardstick of what they need in this person, and then each candidate can be weighed objectively against that yardstick. Again, emphasizing the goodness of fit with South Orange. We have to recognize that you are unique here and you need a candidate that exactly fits your needs. And the person may not work anywhere else, but they might be the right person for you. So it's the task of this process, then, to get down and find that one person. The key success factors for a CEO, I don't think you'd be surprised at any of those. Let's go on. Candidate identification. With regard to building the pool, we do want to emphasize the importance of starting with a good pool, and in that pool, of course, you have access to everybody that ACCT has access to, and that's the whole array of community college people. But in addition to that, you should be looking around and thinking about people who are in the community or in the region who might be a good person for a chancellor. So there's an opportunity for you to get those candidates to apply so that they can be considered as well. Then candidates are recruited through advertising, and you can see the variety of places where we go to advertise, including local and regional advertising. But the big one there, I think, is the AACC annual meeting. That is the coming together of the majority of candidates will be there at AACC, and we make contact with them individually and recruit to get a pool for you. Next page, we talk about the, the personalized recruitment. People are on the phone calling you, can speak as a potential candidate for previous positions. They call all the time, asking if you want to be a candidate for a particular position, and they talk to you about the unique needs of that campus and how you would be a good candidate for that particular search. And they also send out hundreds of letters to people that they have on their mailing list and ask them, "Do you know anyone who might suit this position?" And they give some clues as to what is expected in this position, because by that time, we do know what you're looking for. Then the search committee, again, that's probably the same as you have seen before, the AACC, pardon me, ACCT, not surprisingly, recommends that one or two board members sit on the search committee as well, and that's so that you will maintain a good liaison with the search committee. The responsibilities of the search committee are quite serious, and they're listed at the bottom, but all the time working through and with the board, back and forth with the board. You don't want to get to the end and then have the search committee acting in a way of, or making recommendations to you that are not appropriate for you. You have to give them some clues as to what direction you need them to go in. Communication throughout the process on page 13. Reporting out to the various groups so that everybody, not everybody can serve in the search committee, but everybody wants to know what's going on, including the people in the community, so we need to make sure that that is reported. Now, the timeline is laid out on page 14, and so, as I said, that would fit inside your desire to have someone here in October. Now, it's not necessary that the search committee perform all those functions. It could be that you would decide that you want ACCT to do that, and that is, for example, to receive all the packages that come in from the candidates and to process them, and then to send you the top five to 10 and give those to the search committee. That saves a lot of time, but it is much more expensive. So in summary, I would say, then, that ACCT, just the name ACCT, brings a great deal of credibility to the process, and credibility is important to good candidates. Good candidates are not out there applying for every search company that comes along. They do tend to pick and choose, and ACCT has a great deal of credibility. ACCT provides support for the entire process. It works with the board and has, as I said before, the, probably the best list of potential candidates that exists. So with that, I thank you, and I'll take your questions.
Thank you very much, and trustee Fuentes.
Thank you so, thank you so much for that informative presentation. By the very nature of the name of the organization, do you have experience in liaison with candidates from four-year institutions and private institutions?
Yes, yes, definitely, yes. Because there's so many ways for candidates to come forward. Nominees, and a candidate can actually just apply, and then ACCT will follow up with them, because they're always looking for additions to their viable candidate list. And some of them are, I, I worked in universities before I came to community colleges.
You spoke of the timeframe. If more time would be appropriate, and you felt, once you got into the process, that it would be, how would you relate that? How would we, how would you share that with us?
Well, we're talking with the board all the time. It's, it's not like we're working over here independently and then we're going to hit you with a surprise. More than likely, we would have alerted you to the fact that the candidate pool is low or not adequate, and so we would work together on that.
I've asked the other presenters if they had a perspective on time of the year versus academic calendar versus availability of, of the largest pool and quality candidates. Do you have a sense of that?
Well, while I wouldn't differ with what the previous speaker said, I also have had the additional experience of having been an interim and going into a situation where, where somebody left for a new job, retired, died, whatever. So I know that there are ways of getting around that.
Is that to say, use an interim until you bring on a new candidate, or advise the candidate's institution to hire an interim while you take their?
I, I think you should maintain that as an option. I definitely do. But now, it's also possible that we can put together a sizable and high-quality pool for you in a short time, and then there's no reason not to proceed with it.
In your most recent and closest chancellor search, how big has the pool been?
You know, I have not had that experience myself personally, but I would think that you would want at least 20, 25.
And, and do you view the process in, in terms of steps of how many the, the committee, can you, can you give me some biggest-of-breadbox kind of ideas of?
Yeah, you know, that, that's an option for you, the board, how many candidates you want from them, and do you want them ranked?
Mm-hmm.
I've primarily worked with boards that wanted three.
Thank you.
Let me jump in. I'm just a little curious about your timeline here. You put a sample search timeline together, and then you were talking about potentially getting around a hiring problem or a timing issue, but, but as I look at this, you've got month one, which, you know, we're into March, but almost the end of March. So let's say month one is April. Month one and two for recruitment of candidates, April and May. Month, month three, June, for the search committee to select semifinalists. Months three and four, so we're still June and July, for the board to interview, visit districts, make a selection, and the new chancellor begins. Well, our academic calendar, and I think most community colleges, their academic calendar begins the middle of August.
Yeah, right.
So we're not even rushed, according to your timeline, are we?
No, I would think it would fit inside this.
Oh, okay, good.
Now, a challenge would be that you've got the search committee selecting semifinalists in June. You're going to have to find faculty representatives who are willing to come back in June for that, but that's possible.
Possible, in fact, I think they're, they're lining up.
Uh-huh. I, I would also point out to you that South Orange is an attractive position, so you're, you are in a good place.
Right, thank you. And trustee Lang.
Yes, you said something earlier that intrigued me a little bit, and I thought I'd just follow up on that a little bit, Dr. Redwine. Of a typical, we talked about a typical candidate pool of maybe 25 to 30 people. That would be a good-sized pool. About how many of those would actually have just applied on their own from all of the advertisements that they've seen out there?
That's a very good point, yeah.
Versus folks that you've actually recruited?
Right.
To apply to the pool?
And that we know well, and we know their experience well. I would say probably at least two-thirds of them would fall in the category of being known by ACCT. And they've perhaps placed them in several jobs before, you know, over their careers.
And about how many of those might our team, if you will, have actively recruited to apply for the position?
Oh, just a few, probably. And, and now, you're thinking about bringing people in from the outside? Okay. A challenge there is the search committee. You probably know that community colleges tend to be cultish, and if you haven't been born in a community college and raised in a community college, sometimes search committees have a hard time with that. And, and I really know that because I came in from the outside. I chose to come to the community colleges after I was awarded tenure and promoted and all that at the university, but I just saw community colleges as really serving students and communities. But, yes, I have had to deal with that, yes. It's a challenge.
All right. Seeing no further questions, Ms. Redwine, thank you very much for the presentation.
All right, thank you. And again, thank you for your work as trustees.
Appreciate it.
Trustee Padberg, and we've been going a while. Might I indulge the board for, did we take a quick break?
Sure.
Okay, and then we'll come back and discuss the matter. And, no, that's the last, that's the last presentation, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought, yeah. No, we're, we're done with the presentations.
[inaudible]
Well, yeah. I know, I know. Yeah. Oh, that's true, yeah. Good, about yourself. Ah, yeah. Ah.
That was very professionally done.
Oh, the interviews?
Yeah, that was very nice.
Let's see.
And you know what? It's really nice, trustee J, this is such an open process, so that we get to see the, the consultants. He said 6.4.
That makes it easier. I didn't remember.
And so this is Saddleback, so they say that the curriculum community in the Senate. And so they propose some.
Yeah, see, that's, remember when I sat down with Cheryl right after a board policy meeting, and we wrote that this was an item under Title V?
Yeah, that isn't in there.
Yeah, should we put that in the, in the, see, I thought that's what our recommendation was on items where there must be cleat of consultation, that we would put that in the, in the background, I think we said. And it is on some of them, but I don't think it is on all of them. Curriculum would clearly be one. Um, well.
Well, I talked to her about this. She's probably worked on other things. Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that. Yeah, so what we need to, it's a hard thing to coordinate because these things are done not at the district, but at the college, except for the, the one that gets done by the community.
And remember, this was your, your first year.
Yes, no, I know. I know.
I think the language is real simple, we're working on the system.
And why does that, this, this, this?
That's it, that was it, thank you.
President of the House. For all electeds.
Can I sit?
I'm working, man.
Yeah, pushing buttons. Can I switch from one to the other?
I do.
San Francisco State, yeah, coming down on Monday.
This one, this is, this is.
She's, I think she's hooked up with some job, actually, where she gets paid, doing, doing journalism, yeah. But she'd be great, she gets it. She hadn't had a job in quite a while.
You know the old, you know the old joke, send money, send money?
Yeah.
I was joking.
I'm doing fine, thank you for asking. Getting a little sugar in my system, waiting back up.
I know, I know.
Yep. You'd be up all night.
I make kids here.
I like.
I have two boys, I, I have two sons and three stepsons. I have five, my husband and I have five sons between, between 18 and 31.
My 31-year-old got married in September, I mean, last September, and the, my middle stepson got married about, not quite two years ago, and we have two grandsons, and a couple months ago, my middle stepson just gave us.
Hey! Everybody, are you ready?
Yeah. And my young
President of the House. For all electeds.
Can I sit?
I'm working, man.
Yeah, pushing buttons. Can I switch from one to the other? I do. San Francisco State, yeah, coming down on Monday. She's, I think she hooked up with some job, actually, where she gets paid. Doing journalism, yeah. But she'd be great. She hadn't had a job in quite a while. You know the old joke, send money, send money?
I'm doing fine. Thank you for asking. Getting a little sugar in my system, waiting back up. Yep. You'd be up all night. How many kids you have? I like that. I have two boys, I have two sons and three stepsons. I have five, my husband and I have five sons between eighteen and thirty-one. The thirty-one-year-old got married in September, I mean, last September. And the, my middle stepson got married about, not quite two years ago. And we have two grandsons. And a couple months ago, the middle stepson just gave us... And my youngest graduates graduate high school this June. So we're almost out of it. We've got him in, we've got him in college and in military and in business. Well, my husband's a retired Navy. He's retired Navy chief. He was a weapons chief. Weapons specialist. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Yeah. She's not...
No, I was trying to, trying to get her...
Yeah. But you know, I was the same way. I didn't have my sons until I was thirty-five and thirty-seven. It's a trade-off. You know, I didn't have the energy. I would have had, had I had them in my twenties. But I had the patience I wouldn't have had in my twenties. Yeah, you are.
Are you sure? How's it going? How's it going?
Most of them were not skilled.
Yeah.
Looking good.
Yes.
But the Texas...
It is a trade-off. You sure this is working, man?
He said it's too far, I mean...
No, let me ask you this. Do you think you want to come down to Santa Barbara?
Sure.
Where? Give me the water.
It's all over the place.
That was pretty, that was very lucky, I was never...
I told the journalist, you can quote it in the comments.
No, 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 I didn't.
My whole joke was, you're...
I didn't, and I never, have you heard? I said, "Never heard that." I've never heard that. I've never heard that. Somebody told me to everywhere.
He tries to wind up white-hearted and then...
I mean, it's, it was just, just set the tone for a white-hearted moment. I googled the term, biblical humor. And that's what popped up about Jonah and the little classroom, and little girls doing their teacher.
He said, "I could tell it to you now, but I don't..."
Did her attorney say that?
No, I didn't.
Oh, very good.
Hey, so if you haven't seen it, don't look it up now. Okay.
And they asked me, probably you too, I had a look at Tom's... Since I looked at all of those.
Where's Bill? Come on, Bill.
They were going to show me a picture.
And they included, and they...
He was the first one I did this. He said he would have been a lawyer.
His comments, they said, "Would those still be in the office?"
Okay, get to bed.
What did you, what did you?
I mean, you had it there with you at the policy right? I don't know, they wouldn't have. The policy gives a great deal of leeway. The only thing the policy misses is any video or power points or something need to be reviewed in their entire ownership.
I don't take it as a simple...
It's going crazy.
I don't take it as a simple... It's a mix of... 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 I'm working, man.
Yeah, pushing buttons. Can I switch from one to the other? I do. San Francisco State, yeah, coming down on Monday. She's, I think she hooked up with some job, actually, where she gets paid. Doing journalism, yeah. But she'd be great. She hadn't had a job in quite a while. You know the old, you know the old joke, send money, send money?
Yeah. I was joking. I'm doing fine. Thank you for asking. Getting a little sugar in my system, waiting back up. Yep. You'd be up all night. I make kids cheer. I like that. I have two boys, I have two sons and three stepsons. I have five, my husband and I have five sons between eighteen and thirty-one. I mean, last September. And the, my middle stepson got married about, not quite two years ago. And we have two grandsons. And a couple months ago, my middle stepson just gave us... And my youngest graduates graduate high school this June. So we're almost out of it. We've got him in, we've got him in college and in military and in business. Well, my husband's a retired Navy. He's retired Navy chief. He was a weapons chief. Weapons specialist. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Yeah. Yeah. She's not... Boy, she is...
No, I was trying to, trying to get her...
Yeah. But you know, I was the same way. I didn't have my sons until I was thirty-five and thirty-seven. It's a trade-off. You know, I didn't have the energy. I would have had, had I had them in my twenties. But I had the patience I wouldn't have had in my twenties. Yeah, you are. Yeah.
Are you sure? How's it going? How's it going?
Yes.
Most of them were not skilled.
Yes.
Looking good.
Yes.
But the Texas...
It is a trade-off.
It is a trade-off. You sure this is working, man?
He said it's too far, I mean...
No, let me ask you this. Do you think you want to come down to Santa Barbara?
Sure.
Where? Give me the water.
It's all over the place.
That was pretty, that was very lucky, I was never...
I told the journalist, you can quote it in the comments.
No, 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 I didn't.
My whole joke was, you're...
I didn't, and I never, have you heard? I said, "Never heard that." I've never heard that. I've never heard that. Somebody told me to everywhere.
She said she calls him...
Yeah.
It's true, no, it's true. That's been a long... He says, "Oh, is that reported?" I said, "Yes." I said, "The report makes you..." He tries to wind up white-hearted and then...
You need to...
I mean, it's, it was just, just set the tone for a white-hearted moment. I googled the term, biblical humor. And that's what popped up about Jonah and the little classroom, and little girls doing their teacher.
He said, "I could tell it to you now, but I don't..."
Did her attorney say that?
No, I didn't.
No, no.
Okay. If you haven't seen it, don't look it up now. Okay.
And they asked me, probably you too, I had a look at Tom's... Since I looked at all of those.
Where's Bill? Come on, Bill.
They were going to show me a picture.
And they included, and they...
He was the first one I did this. He said he would have been a lawyer.
His comments, they, they said, "Would those still be in the office?"
Okay, get to bed. That's been a blight of shit.
What did you, what did you?
I mean, you had it there with you at the policy right? I don't know, they wouldn't have...
The policy gives a great deal of leeway. The only thing the policy misses is any video or power points or something need to be reviewed in their entire ownership.
I don't take it as a simple... It's a mix of... 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 It was a weapons chief. Weapons specialist. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Yeah. Yeah. She's not... Boy, she is...
No, I was trying to, trying to get her...
Yeah. But you know, I was the same way. I didn't have my sons until I was thirty-five and thirty-seven. It's a trade-off. Yeah. It's a trade-off. You know, I didn't have the energy. I would have had, had I had them in my twenties. But I had the patience I wouldn't have had in my twenties. Yeah, you are. Nah.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Most of them were not skilled.
Yes.
Looking good.
Yes.
But the Texas...
It is a trade-off.
It is a trade-off. You sure this is working, man?
He said it's too far, I mean...
No, let me ask you this. Do you think you want to come down to Santa Barbara?
Sure.
Where? Give me the water.
It's all over the place.
That was pretty, that was very lucky, I was never...
I told the journalist, you can quote it in the comments.
No, 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 I didn't.
My whole joke was, you're...
I didn't, and I never, have you heard? I said, "Never heard that." I've never heard that. I've never heard that. Somebody told me to everywhere.
She said she calls him...
Yeah.
It's true, no, it's true. That's been a long... He says, "Oh, is that reported?" I said, "Yes." I said, "The report makes you..." He tries to wind up white-hearted and then...
You need to...
I mean, it's, it was just, just set the tone for a white-hearted moment. I googled the term, biblical humor. And that's what popped up about Jonah and the little classroom, and little girls doing their teacher.
I was at the... He said, "No, I could tell it to you now, but I don't..."
Did her attorney say that?
No, I didn't.
No, no.
Okay. If you haven't seen it, don't look it up now.
And they asked me, probably you too, I had a look at Tom's... Since I looked at all of those.
Where's Bill? Come on, Bill.
They were going to show me a picture.
And they included, and they...
He was the first one I did this. He said he would have been a lawyer.
His comments, they, they said, "Would those still be in the office?"
He told me, he told me, he told me, "Okay, get to bed."
What did you, what did you?
He was trying to play the...
I mean, you had it there with you at the policy right? I don't know, they wouldn't have... The policy gives a great deal of leeway. The only thing the policy misses is any video or power points or something need to be reviewed in their entire ownership.
I don't take it as a simple... It's a mix of... 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 It's a mix of...
I told the journalist, you can quote it in the comments.
No, 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 I didn't.
My whole joke was, you're...
I didn't, and I never, have you heard? I said, "Never heard that." I've never heard that. I've never heard that. I've never heard that. Somebody told me to everywhere.
She said she calls him...
Yeah.
It's true, no, it's true. That's been a long... He says, "Oh, is that reported?" I said, "Yes." I said, "The report makes you..." He tries to wind up white-hearted and then...
You need to...
I mean, it's, it was just, just set the tone for a white-hearted moment. I googled the term, biblical humor. And that's what popped up about Jonah and the little classroom, and little girls doing their teacher.
He said, "I could tell it to you now, but I don't..."
Did her attorney say that?
No, I didn't. Okay. So now I can look it up.
And they asked me, probably you too, I had a look at Tom's... Since I looked at all of those.
Where's Bill? Come on, Bill.
They were going to show me a picture.
And they included, and they...
He was the first one I did this. He said he would have been a lawyer.
His comments, they, they said, "Would those still be in the office?"
Okay, get to bed.
I was impressed with both the PPL proposal as well as the ACCT proposal would probably be my top choices. So obviously, I think we've got some divergent views in terms of those folks that presented to us tonight.
Trustee Jay.
Yes, I would support the recommendation. What was it for? CCSS? Very personal. You know, here's my reasoning, guys.
Turn on your microphone.
Oh, here's my reasoning. Excited, so I didn't press my button. But my feeling is this, that we have three trustees running for other positions. I think all three will be elected. And I think if they're elected, we're likely to have three board members in the fall, new ones. And I think that would be a disaster for this district. We all know the situation in this district, and I think we probably should go ahead right now and proceed as rapidly as possible. And I like CCSS, too. I'm terribly impressed with them, even though they're the very first ones. And some of the others made good presentations. But I think CCSS would do a fine job for us. And primarily, they're located here in California. So I would go along with the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Milchker.
Yes, hello, thank you. I do agree with trustee Jay, but for different reasons. I think that having our board members elected to higher office would be very good for the community college system in general. Having someone that really is akin and believes in the community colleges and loved the community colleges serving in the legislature, I think, would be having a voice in higher places. So I think that would be a good thing. Of course, I'd miss these board members, but I think that would be a good thing. But I agree with trustee Jay in that if you look at the proposal by PPL, and they did an extensive list of all the people that are going to be turning over now, one of the people that is listed is listed that our own chancellor is going to be retiring in June, and it was listed on that list. So I think if we are responsible trustees, and our job is to serve the people and the public, and to serve our community colleges, and do the best job we can for our community colleges, and the students, of course, the students are A number one. That's the first, second, and third responsibility of the community college trustees are our students. I think that we have to move forward carefully and well, but move forward. You know, let's have some leadership here, and let's do something. Because we don't want to leave the district with a void for very long. Let's move forward. And practically, all the people that were there said that there isn't really any best time to choose a chancellor. And many of them said the best time to get started is now. You know, we need a chancellor now, so let's get started now. And I think Vice Chancellor Bouguet, we asked him to find search firms. He found 35. He asked for proposals. They forwarded three. Then some of the board members, including trustee Fuentes, asked to interview all these people that want to surge as our search firms committees, serve as the people to do our search, help us do our search. And I thought that was a very good suggestion, and it was really good to hear from these different groups, different search groups who are doing the search. They all said similar things. But all the people that wanted to come here came here. Vice Chancellor Bouguet said, please come tonight, we have to be them tonight. And if they didn't come tonight, I think they don't really want the job very much, and they won't do a good job for us. So I say, let's choose someone, a search firm, tonight. That's my feeling.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
Of all of the search firms tonight, I believe they could all do the search for us. But of the four, I favor ACCT. They've been around a long time, nationwide network, and this is truly going to be a nationwide search. Pardon me. So my vote would go to ACCT. If there are others to interview, I would favor that, too. But ACCT has a reputation that is second to none in searches.
Trustee Fuentes.
I want to again argue for taking the time to do it right. I think it was made very clear that the board rushed down the track by jumping the gun and putting the cart before the horse in the very important brochure process already. It was made very clear by all of the presenters that that is a task very normal to the process by which the consultant should be advising us. It's included in their fee. It's something that we should have had the benefit of their input. I'm not quite satisfied with Dr. Bouguet's response to me, that he didn't ask these other two submitters if they might be available at another time. It was very short, but a matter of few days, that they were given the date of this meeting. It's all happened within a week or so. You know, we've seen in Washington, D.C., heavy-handed push of railroading government in America in the last two weeks. It's bad in Washington, and it's bad in South Orange County. And I don't think that we should be rushing into something as important as this without having full information. We have already heard from presenters this evening that not only are we making a selection of candidates, but candidates are making a selection of us. And I think we should be projecting a unified and thoughtful board in making our decisions in this process. It is obvious, there's a very strained relationship between the majority and the minority on this board presently. This continues to be festered and fostered because of this push to rush, to make decisions without full information. I don't think that's the message we want to send to our community and to prospective candidates. I think we should take the time to do it right. We have clearly at least two more proposals that we can hear, and we can take the time between now and the April meeting to make a thoughtful and thorough evaluation.
Trustee Milchker.
I personally think it's not helpful to talk about festering feelings among board members. I think it doesn't make our district look really desirable, and I don't see any festering feelings, personally.
You can just call me Madam Speaker.
And in addition, I think we should all want to move forward and choose a chancellor for our district. We had five very good search teams come. We really could pick any one of the search teams. For some reason, we're not even a member of ACCT. We haven't been a member for many, many, many years. Instead of belonging to ACCT, now we belong to AGB. So why would we pick a search firm of an organization that we're not even a member of for probably five or 10 years? So I would just go personally for the local search firm, and they have the contacts locally, and they've done some superb jobs. They hired a statewide chancellor in our community college district, and I feel very comfortable about moving forward with that firm.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I think I'm obviously going to choose to disagree with trustee Milchker. I think one of the things that we obtain with an ACCT, I don't think it makes a big difference that we are a member of them. I think what is important is, are they doing a capable job? Do they have the resources? And I'm not certain going with a local firm is really what we had talked about as a board initially. We had talked about conducting a national search. So it seems to me we're looking for the organization that can best accomplish that. ACCT has indicated to us that they have the biggest black book. That certainly, it seems to me, is an argument in their favor in terms of being able to conduct the kind of large expansive search that will identify and gather for us the biggest possible qualified pool. That's really what we ought to be considering. I am a little troubled with some of the comments also that were made tonight regarding the fact that we may be a little bit off in terms of our timeline on this, and how that may impact the ability to get the biggest pool, biggest most qualified pool that we possibly can. Again, what I was hearing is that there are certain individuals that will feel a responsibility to their institutions and not want to leave those institutions at the, you know, beginning of a new academic year. That's troubling to me. I, again, would also urge my colleagues on the board, take the additional time that we have available to us, and let's do this right, and let's see if we can come to some uniform agreement on how best to approach this.
Mr. Padberg.
Well, I just want to briefly say that I am a big fan of ACCT. I think that this board should rejoin that. If they want to continue with AGB, fine, but ACCT is certainly the standard throughout the country. That's not on point. On point is calling the question. I call a question.
Is there a second to call the question?
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, well, since you're the only one who wanted to speak next, that's fine, then the question's called. Let's go ahead and just vote on the main motion, which is to approve the hire of CCSS as our consultant in the chancellor's search process. Let's vote. Matter carries with three no votes and an advisory yes vote. We are at item 6.1, which is a grant acceptance here for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Is there a move and seconded discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.2 is the bridge replacement for approval.
Motion.
Moved by trustee Padberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. 6.3, the amended 2010 and 2011 faculty request list here for approval.
Motion.
Moved by trustee Padberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Trustee Lang.
Yes, and I was actually hoping that Dr. Burnett would be here tonight to be able to address this item, but perhaps somebody else can help in that regard. I was wondering that how many of the new positions that are indicated on here are expected to be filled.
We are looking forward for the top three in the new positions. We're looking at the three positions.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Matter carries unanimously. And item 6.4, motion by trustee Padberg. Is there a second?
Second.
This is curriculum review and revisions. Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.5, there has been, at request of admin... No, no, yeah, no, excuse me, excuse me, wrong item. 6.5, we have pulled and will address probably next month. 6.6 is for auditing services. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I'll move this item, and I'll just add that I was privileged to be board leadership person who sat on this committee, and was very impressed with the staff who staffed it, and with the applicants. We're very familiar with MCAU, and that's the one recommended, because they did our audits some years ago. So I'm pleased to recommend and to move this item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded discussion?
Yes, one.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to thank trustee Padberg for serving on this committee. I know it took a lot of extra time to choose our next auditor, so I want to thank her from the rest of the board.
Are these people used right before Vincenti?
Yes.
Is that where they came from? Are these the folks we used right before?
Not right before. Was it the year before, or the...
No, the contract before this last one, these people have.
Yes.
So that would have been five years ago.
Four years, okay. Okay, thank you. Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. 6.7, CCT Board of Directors election, and at this point, we slow down, and I ask each of you to read off your six? Top seven nominees. Is that correct?
We have voted for seven.
Suppose I've only got three?
Yeah. You can cast all your votes for them.
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't have to give all seven.
Okay.
In fact, typically, what this board has done is, in recognition of our colleague from Orange County, Walt Howell, we've all cast our votes for trustee Howell, and let it go at that. But the board is welcome to do what it will with these numbers, or with these names. And trustee Jay, you were up first.
Yeah. Nancy Chadwick from Palomar, Don Singer from San Bernardino, and Walter Howard from Orange County.
Okay. There are a couple of trustees looking to speak as opposed, before we actually call names, so let me take the comments first. Trustee Padberg, I believe you're next.
Well, I was just going to say that I have met Nancy Chadwick, and I would support her, as well as, of course, Walt Howard. So I'm in agreement with trustee Jay on those two, at least.
All right. And trustee Williams.
I would move, well, maybe we're not making motions. I would recommend that the board put all of our support behind Walter Howell again.
Okay. Trustee Padberg.
I do think that we should diversify where we can, and where there are recommendations to do so. So I'm going to suggest that although I think Walt Howard is terrific, and he would get perhaps more than just one vote from us, if we don't recommend more than two or three, I still think that we should consider the other trustees' recommendations and include that in the motion. I'll make the motion that we select the three that trustee Jay has named, and that we use extra votes that we may have for Walt Howard. So does anyone know how that would work out?
I'm not sure how that would work out. Why don't we just go down the list and let administration record the votes, and I think ultimately, we'll get to the same place. So trustee Jay, if he would...
No, I'll take it.
Well, no, your button, turn your microphone off. And now push your request to speak button.
There you go.
Now, you're next. Trustee Fuentes. After trustee Fuentes.
Thank you.
Trustee Jay, do you know these other two people, other than Howell?
I know Walter Howard. And I've worked with Don Singer.
For a long time, and he's a very dedicated college president, and eventually a chancellor, as I recall. I'll admit that I don't know Nancy Chadwick, but she is just the college next door to us, our district's border, so I think our interests are similar. So that's why I picked those three people.
I know Walter Howell, as I believe all of you do.
Yeah.
It's obvious that some of us don't know others, have never met the others. I think it would be responsible for us to cast all our votes for Walter Howell.
Trustee Milchker was next.
I will vote for trustee Walter Howell, because I know him, and I think it would be good to have a trustee from Orange County representing us in the CCT Board of Directors.
Trustee Padberg.
I will cast my votes for the three that Bill J., trustee Jay, suggested.
All right. Seeing no other requests to speak, let's ask each trustee individually, and trustee Jay, if you'd give us those again.
Chadwick, Singer, and Howell.
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 Trustee Williams.
Walter Howard.
Trustee Milchker.
Walter Howard.
Trustee Padberg.
Chadwick, Singer, and Howell.
Okay. And I'm just for Howell, as well. Trustee Fuentes.
Howell.
And trustee Lang.
Howell.
Okay. Tell me, someone, does the student trustee vote in this? I don't believe so. Okay. All right. You have recorded our votes. Do with them what you will. Up next is item 6.8, which is a board policy revision here for review and study only. Is there a second?
For review, huh?
For review and study. Trust, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Seconded by trustee Milchker. Trustee Milchker.
Yes, I just have two questions. Number one, who wrote this policy? And number two, is it just taken from the Ed Code Section 76060, or is, are there any other editorials that we put in it?
Yeah, the legal reference for the policy being written is the citation. This was written by legal counsel with the Community College League of California, their board policy advisory services that we belong in, too.
Is that who has been reviewing and writing all of our board policies now?
They don't do all of them, but their service provides us with templates for most of them.
Okay.
And some of them, we just accept the way they are. And others, we personalize them to the district.
Thank you. It seems like it's a good generic policy to me.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Well, unfortunately, my agenda missed 6.8. It has 6.9 under that tab. Thank you very much. I would like particularly to hear from our student trustee and what her recommendations are. Of course, we're going to accept it for review and study, but I would like to have input from students about this policy.
I actually had Walter Howard as the CCT Board of Directors.
Oh, I was asking you about the policy, 6.8, agenda item 6.8, and maybe, since we're only accepting it for review and study, you could come back with information for us next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's vote on accepting the policy for review and study. And the matter carries unanimously. 6.9 is academic personnel items, and I understand there is an amendment to this item.
Second.
Yes. We'd like to remove the administrator contracts for consideration at the next meeting. So if the board could, recommendations, remove those at this time?
Move the balance of the item.
All right, it is moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded without item D1. And further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Six, 10, classified personnel items. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So votes.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Let's vote. Trustee Fuentes, please. Thank you, sir. And that matter carries unanimously. Item 611 is the report on probationary faculty, and this is an item for approval.
Uh huh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote. 612, this is a resolution for classified employee layoff. It's here for approval, ratification. It is a resolution, so we will do a roll call. Is there a discussion on the item before the roll call? Trustee Williams.
That this, I looked at this item. This is a reflection of the reduction in state funding corresponding for the categorical programs.
This is from a grant ending.
A grant ending, okay. All right.
Categorical.
Further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the item.
Did you just say you're going to roll call?
Oh, I did say I was going to do a roll call, so thank you for keeping me honest. Well, it's a roll call, so we will do it by roll call. And Madam Secretary, if you would call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg. Aye. Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee B.
Aye.
Matter carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 613, also for review and study, this is the initial proposal from the District Faculty Association.
Move acceptance for review and study.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, the matter is accepted. All right. 7.1, this is an information item, the Saddleback and IVC Professors of the Year. Discussions?
Questions? Comments?
Well...
Trustee Williams.
This is to be honored at the annual October event, is it not, trustee Mather, at the Disneyland Hotel? This is what culminates?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And some worthy nominations. Congratulations to all of them. Also, information, item 7.2, these are speakers. Discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none. 7.3 is our basic aid report. Discussions, questions, comments? 7.4, facilities plan status report.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. And 7.5, the list of board reports. 7.6, the monthly financial status report. Discussion? All right. Seeing none, we are to the report section of tonight's meeting, and we will start with President Rockmore.
Yes, thank you very much. I would like to take a moment. You do have the report, and it was mentioned for the Teachers of the Year. Microphone's not working?
Well, yeah.
Maybe I have to get really close. There we go. That seems to be very close. Okay. Just to recognize our Professors of the Year, Ilkner Erbus White from the School of Mathematics, Computer Science, and Engineering is a full-time Professor of the Year. Robert Ellis from the School of Physical Sciences and Technologies is the part-time Teacher of the Year. And Ellen Lang is the Emeritus Institute Professor of the Year. Wanted to congratulate all of them. Something really exciting happened just recently. We held our annual Senior Day, and believe it or not, we had 1,900 seniors attend Irvine Valley College. The quad was full. It was really an exciting and highly successful event, and I thank all of those that were involved in making that happen. And then finally, I had the honor of accompanying two students who were elected to the first all-California academic team, Jaclyn Joe and Eric Nolan. And then a special surprise while we were there is that Jaclyn received a silver medal from the Coca-Cola Scholarship, and this is a very high honor nationwide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Provost Peoples.
Thank you, good evening. Please report that there's continued productive work on a series of clarifying documents about ATAP, and we're working with administration, faculty, and others to produce those, and hope to share those more broadly very soon. Also, the dean at ATAP and I continue to meet with prospective ATAP partners that we think will certainly be providing technology and educational resources to support our programs from the two colleges that are at ATAP. And finally, an exciting announcement. The state recently announced a two-year funded grant for ATAP of $440,000 for a two-year industry-driven regional collaborative for what will be called an Environmental Design and Compliance Center. So I'll be meeting with staff, especially at Irvine Valley, as we coordinate that. And we're continuing to work very, very hard in identifying additional grants that we'll be pursuing, and are working on several now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Professor Davis Allen.
I have a few things this evening. Is it on? I can't... Real close. I'm real close. Okay. First, we are, the Academic Senate at IVC will be hosting two more IVC-to-IVC lecture series, Monday night, the 29th of this month. Rupa Mather from Computer Information Management will be presenting Create Your Website Using Dreamweaver. And on April 19th, the Art Department as a whole, our three major studio full-time faculty, will be presenting fellow colleagues and working artists, where we'll have the opportunity to see what they do as professional artists when they are not in the classroom. So I invite you to that. As well, our Spring 2010 Distinguished Academic Lecture Series that is sponsored by the Academic Senate will be presenting Methods of Jazz, featuring three musicians. The first one will be Ki Akagi, and he is the Chancellor's Distinguished Professor of Music at the Claire Trevor School of the Arts at the University of California, Irvine. In addition, on trombone, we will see featured Michael Dessin and Derek Oles on bass. Also, I'd like to invite all of you to the April 1st, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. opening of the Spring IVC Art Department Faculty Show, and this year it is titled Faculty Plus One. We have invited Dr. Rockmore to show with us, and two of his works will also be in the gallery along with the faculty. Then finally, if you will bear with me just one second, I'd like to say that earlier this evening, before I got here, I found out that my youngest stepson and the USS Cleveland... I got here, I found out that my youngest stepson and the USS Cleveland, after a long and extended deployment to Iraq for the second time, will be home April 14th, pulling into San Diego. So I will be at school that day. So, thank you.
Professor Cosgrove?
Thank you. Just want to invite anyone who would like to attend our Senate meeting a week from this coming Wednesday, when we have our discussion of the Wellness Center and ATAP. You're certainly invited.
Thank you, sir. Professor Hagerty.
Thank you, President Wagner. Just briefly, just like to point out that Professor Will Summers from Math Science Engineering here at Saddleback College will receive the, what we refer to as the WHO Award. We honor ours. That will be at the spring session of the Community College Association, and we're very, very proud that Will will receive that award. And then the last thing is that we're having a, the Faculty Association putting together a training session for our new leadership for the association, and we targeted more of our newer faculty members. We've been hired in the last 10 years to make them more aware of the association, and also to encourage them to be part of the leadership for the association in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one on the other side of the room, I think we stand adjourned. Thank you all.